It's a little cold out, isn't it Dennis?
It's starting to get cool, but judging from the two trains that went by, apparently the economy is not so bad. The traffic has not slowed. Of course, they might be shorter trains than they were. I don't know where they got it, probably online. BCIU the other night, they had a virtual flag up that we pledged allegiance to, so. They didn't need my flag. And this is truly only coffee.
Give everybody another minute or two. We're still waiting on Eric, right? And Christian is blocked out.
I'm here, I'm just managing several different screens and.
We'll give Eric one more minute. He was on the exec session.
What's your new background, Mike?
That is from Inside Out.
Oh, yeah.
Haven't seen it. Fun.
You can also change to Andy's bedroom if you would prefer that.
I think I like the other one better.
All right, it looks like Eric is there.
I'm here. Yes, I just got a notice I've been promoted to panelist. I'm not sure what that means or what.
Congratulations, Eric.
Please go along with that, but.
Yes. We voted for that while you were away.
Okay, okay.
All right, well, let's, uh, let's get started. I'll call the meeting to order. Could we have a moment of silent meditation? And a pledge to the flag, Dennis, I believe you have, oh, there's a flag.
We have a flag, all right.
I pledge allegiance. I'd like to thank everyone who has joined us online tonight for this, um, for this meeting. Appreciate everybody's attendance. Uh, we will have a period of time where we have public comments. If you feel you need to discuss a topic as we're going along here, there is a mechanism to, to buzz in, I believe, and ask your question. Um, there was an executive session held prior to this meeting to review personnel and legal items. So with that, uh, roll call, please.
Randy Birch?
Here.
Al Darian?
Here.
Michael Hess?
Here.
Cecilia Holt? Cecilia? Dennis Ritter?
Here.
Sorry Ricky, I'm here.
It's okay, I know I saw you before. Um, Eric Johnson?
Yes, I'm here.
Carl Nolte?
Here.
Jim Schroeder? Charles Scher?
Here.
Perfect, thank you Ricky. The first item of business will be number three, and I have to see, Christian, you're kind of, you made it so large, the people's faces are blocking it. I have a, this, we covered it the last meeting, but we'll go over again, is the recommendation of the administration at the Board of School Directors for Board Policy 003 functions approved to dispend the application of Board Policy 006.1. Attendance at meetings via electronic communications and authorize use of a virtual meeting platform for the conduct of the current and future public board meetings, which has been and shall be duly advertised and provided for required public participation in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act until further determination by a majority of the board. Again, this is something we would plan on covering while the COVID-19, um, issue is in place. So do I have a motion around item number three?
So moved. Second, Dennis. Eric moved.
So the motion is second. Any other comments or discussion from board members regarding this, how we will proceed here while COVID-19 issues exist? Hearing none. Roll call, please Ricky.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Charles Scher?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes. So approved. The next item of business is your approval of minutes from the April 6th, 2020 school board meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Your motion, is there a second?
Uh, this is Mike, I'll second.
Motion or second. Any comments, uh, questions or corrections for that, uh, for those minutes? Hearing none. Roll call, please Ricky.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Charles Scher?
Present.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes. So approved. The next item will be the treasurer's report. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Nolte. This is the treasurer's report for March 2020. The month began with a cash balance of $1,438,544.21. We had receipts of $1,273,223.25 transferred money in from investment of $3 million. Paid bills and payroll of $4,508,095.52, leaving us with a cash balance at month end of $1,203,671.94.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
So moved. Randy.
Dennis.
Motion, motion by Randy, second by Dennis. Any other comments or questions regarding the, regarding the treasurer's report? Hearing none. Roll call, please Ricky.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Charles Scher?
Yes.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes. So approved. Next is the approval of bills for payment. Ratification from the general account, including manual checks of $3,464,996.75. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Chuck.
Chuck moved, I think I heard Eric for a second.
Sure.
Yes.
Motion, second. Any comments or questions regarding item 6A? Excuse me. Hearing none. Roll call, please Ricky.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Charles Scher?
Yes.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes. So approved. Next is item B, approval of the general account for the amount of $789,144.46. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second, Randy.
I have a motion, a second. Any comments or questions regarding the general account? Hearing none. Roll call, please Ricky.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Charles Scher?
Yes.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes. So approved. Next is item C, the approval of the construction account in the amount of $4,790. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Randy.
Motion for Randy, is there a second?
Second, Chuck.
A motion, second from Chuck. Any comments or question regarding the construction account? Hearing none. Roll call, please Ricky.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Charles Scher?
Yes.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes. So approved. Next, we'll move on to item seven, communication and reports. We'll start with the superintendent's report, Mr. Tim Chatton.
Thank you, Mr. Nolte. Just let me flip, um, my share. Uh, for our superintendent's good news report for April 20th, 2020, um, you know, we, we are very proud of the launch on April 14th of the elementary school district virtual learning program, moving from our enrichment program to the full virtual learning, uh, with teacher supporting attendance and graded assignments. We put a lot of time and effort into, um, making sure that we got this right, uh, from the beginning. The teachers did a great job in preparation, uh, spent the better part of five professional development days really working on, um, best practices in virtual learning, both asynchronous and synchronous, and, um, we're learning from each other and, and from others across the county and across uh, the world, really, in some ways about how to best operate a virtual learning program. Students, we're doing a fantastic job. We are very excited about the attendance rates. We're seeing reported attendance rates anywhere from 93, 94 upwards of 99% on any given day, and that's across all of our buildings. You know, we have a flexible model that students are able to attend really at any point in the day, um, as we go back and reconcile that, those attendance rates. Doing our best to be flexible families. We know that this is a challenge in, you know, many, um, as it was something that, you know, no one was really prepared for, uh, ahead of the COVID-19 closure, but, uh, the first week was, was very successful largely, and we're still continuing to develop. Not sure if the audio will play on this, but just to give a little snippet of, uh, one of our 10th, one of our 10th grade students prepared a video that, uh, was shared to classmates in preparation of COVID-19. We won't watch the whole thing, but see if the video, whoop, and again, it clicked off anyway. So we'll move on to the next, the, the next option, looking at some, students being very proud of the work that they're, they're doing. We have, uh, some first grade student from Mrs. Hand's class, and also a fifth grade student from Mrs. Blatt's class, sharing their work and reading along with their teachers. Uh, the supports that we can offer in a virtual setting, it may be more important now than ever with students not attending their school day and receiving the socialization that they have. So it's, it's wonderful to see when we have these pictures or videos that demonstrate how excited students are to get back to the full-time learning opportunities, uh, that take, go above and beyond what we are doing from an enrichment standpoint. So I couldn't be more proud of our staff, um, every, every level of the organization from getting us up and running. Um, and to show our attendance rates as high as we are, I think we're, we're, we're doing a great job and, um, we'll continue to learn throughout the process as well. The second part of the good news is a little bit different good news in that we have, um, wanted to display and publicly, uh, communicate what the current proposed recommended updated calendar is for 2019 and 2020. Um, with our mandated closures, uh, students were out of the mandatory school setting for 18 school days. As I said, teachers continued to do professional development throughout that time, uh, for the, um, for a large portion of what through the enrichment, um, teachers were preparing for enrichment in addition to professional development or virtual learning. Um, but looking at an opportunity to adjust the calendar to help provide as much instruction as we can to our students within a reasonable timeline of calendar. I believe that education is the, is a great commodity that we can offer, and the value of what we are providing for our students today, you know, is greater than, um, the changes that it takes to change that calendar. We can add 10 school days for students and still have a last day for students on June 12th, um, which would move the last teacher professional development date to June 15th. You know, with an early planned May, uh, final day for the 2019, 2020 calendar. It left us a lot of flexibility here to still be in line with many other schools across the Commonwealth with our last day on June 12th. So this is the current, um, proposal for the calendar. Um, I would ask, you know, the board digested for, you know, two weeks and look for a, uh, a recommendation to be approved on our first meeting in May in two weeks. Just think that what we offer in terms of an education to our students is the most important thing, and I want to give every opportunity that we can to make up for any of those losses that occurred throughout March and April. So in addition to start, the start of the virtual learning and our school calendar, that is, that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tim Chatton. Any, uh, any comments from the board members regarding the calendar that we'd like to discuss at this moment in time?
Thoughts? Just to make sure it's, uh, posted, uh, on the, uh, website so that our, uh, families, uh, can see what's being, uh, discussed and give, uh, input during this time period if they, uh, wish to do so.
Absolutely. We'll post it up, we'll post it on the website, you know, for tomorrow morning and leave it up there as the, you know, proposed, um, calendar update for 2019, 2020, and anyone who has, uh, has comments can certainly, uh, reach out to me at my email or, uh, call my office at 484-553-5525.
And, uh, just, I know you couldn't get that, uh, video to run from the student, uh, but if anyone hasn't seen it, they should try to look it up on YouTube. It's, uh, really nicely done and the, uh, uh, the student had a nice message for the, uh, other students in our community.
Here we're going.
It's up.
We'll give a few minutes here for Cooper to get a great shot of this. Ah, ah, I apologize.
But regardless, it was a nice message to, uh, the other, uh, students at the district and, um, I was just saying that our kids have done a really great job, uh, adjusting to the virtual learning. Um, so I'm not sure who's all in with our participants or on YouTube right now, but, uh, the students, the kids and, uh, your kids in the district have done a great job. So just thank you for working with the district, uh, during this difficult time.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to, you know, that's, we're getting messages from teachers every day, just thankful for some of the support they're getting from parents at home, you know, and, and, uh, that message, you know, can't be shared loud enough. Um, our kids are doing a better job adjusting to virtual learning than I am to virtual board meetings as I, uh, click, clicked off that video too soon, but you have an opportunity to just post it on YouTube and Cooper did a fantastic job.
Yeah, but thanks to the students and our community members. Absolutely appreciate it. Any, any other comments, um, from Mr. Tim Chatton on the superintendent's report? All right, hearing, uh, we will move on to board committee reports, and Ricky, I'm gonna need some help here. If you can help me with the order of how we typically go through these.
Sure, no problem. Um, I guess we have extracurricular and facilities committee.
Mr. Birch, were you there?
Yeah, I was. Uh, there was no report for ECC. Uh, obviously, the students, uh, are not, uh, engaged in any, uh, extracurriculars, uh, right now. With facilities, we just, uh, had a quick, uh, regarding the, uh, current state of our facilities and just what's being done to maintain them and, uh, just, uh, make sure everything is, uh, uh, being shut down properly with, uh, people not being in the building.
Perfect. Next one Ricky, is policy and curriculum?
Correct.
Policy and curriculum, um, Ms. Holt.
Okay, so we met last week and Dr. Quinn reported on, uh, basically just all of the tremendous amount of work that the teachers had done and all the professional development they've been doing to get prepared to, through our online launch of the official time that we're in here of virtual learning and, um, pointed out that we have, um, an entire new area on the website, the K A, K A S D dot org slash virtual learning that has a whole bunch of resources and information for students and families. And then for the policy portion of the meeting, uh, we had a bunch of policies on the agenda, but only had time to deal with the three that are on the agenda for approval tonight, um, for first reading, which are tobacco and vaping for both employees and pupils. And they didn't change substantively, really. It was just adding, um, some more language to cover all of the different devices and types of, uh, tobacco and vaping and, um, then policy 904, that's public attendance at school events and just was covering, um, what the expectations are for people who come to our public events. And that concludes my report.
Perfect. Thank you, Cecilia.
Okay, Birch, TCC, I think Dave.
Mr. Miller?
Uh, the March meeting was canceled, so I have no report.
Okay. Birch's Career and Technology Center?
Um, yes, our, uh, meeting for last month was canceled. Uh, we have our next, uh, meeting, uh, this Wednesday. So I don't have an official report. Um, however, ECTC has filed its continuity of education, uh, plan with the state and has moved instruction online. In addition, I don't know if anybody saw, but their, um, ECTC did make, uh, the local news for helping out in the, uh, with regard to the COVID-19 crisis. Um, the, their, uh, CDL instructor, uh, has been driving, uh, drove, transported food for the local food bank. Um, and BCTC itself donated, uh, over 1,150 pounds of food from its lunch program and culinary arts program to the local food bank. The, uh, they're also, uh, utilizing their, uh, 3D printers. Um, they made over 300, uh, headbands for face shields, um, to be used for PPE. For, um, I believe, Tower Health and EMS, and they have repurposed, um, their own PPE supplies, um, including masks, gloves, gowns, and wipes, um, for the local hospital and EMS service. Um, so they've been busy, um, in both their, um, you know, instructional, uh, work as well as, um, trying to help out with, um, COVID-19.
Great. Thank you, Chuck.
Birch's, Birch's County Intermediate Unit?
I was actually made official, uh, last Thursday night. Um, we had our, we finally had a meeting, a March meeting had been canceled, uh, so we had our first virtual meeting last Thursday. Uh, it really went pretty well. Um, as I said, I got, uh, approved to, to serve at this point, uh, for the, on expired term till next year when, uh, I'll have to be reelected, or whoever is our candidate will have to be reelected. Um, we did a number of items, uh, for, um, Head Start, approved a number of things regarding that program. We heard from the various program directors about all of the changes that they've done to do virtual, um, do virtual, uh, education, uh, or the internet and, uh, some of the challenges that they've experienced. Um, so we saw also a copy of their continuation of education plan that's been submitted and approved. Um, so there, things going, and as, uh, um, our, uh, director said, we're open for business. So, um, I think, uh, they feel pretty good about what they've done as far as their teachers working on, uh, you know, providing quality education to the students that they teach. On the horizon, the big thing that we talked about a bit was, um, the, uh, issues with, uh, next year in terms of budgeting, we, we have, most of our budget comes from local sources. Most of their budget, about 90%, I hadn't realized it was that great, comes from either state or federal funding, and so they're really concerned about what might happen at the state and federal level in efforts to contain spending and what things might end up being cut and how that might impact not only our intermediate unit budget, but other intermediate units across the state. So that, uh, was pretty much it. Oh, the other thing is, Dr. Hackman's, uh, uh, review process is, is underway, so, uh, we're, we're involved with that.
Great. Thank you, Dennis.
PSBA?
Ms. Holt?
Right, yes.
The only thing I really have to say for that is, um, that PSBA is really encouraging folks to reach out to their legislators regarding unexpected expenses, um, related to this whole pandemic, and despite the fact that our buildings are closed, um, we might save a little bit of money there, but we still have to maintain them, and there are tons of extra expenses going on to, uh, you're up for online educational delivery.
Yeah, I've seen those emails come through certainly about, uh, asking folks to reach out to the, to their legislature, so.
Yeah, and you know, that, it, that doesn't have to just be board members, it can be everybody in the district that wants to reach out and advocate for their schools.
Absolutely. Ricky, is that all? I think that's all the, the committees?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, it's perfect. Thank you, everyone. Any other comments around board committee reports? Okay, if not, we will move on to new business. We will start with item A, personnel. So, you know, we have one item, um, in item A, um, regarding the acceptance or resignation of Tim Cowell, um, as a, as an elementary library, effective April 24th, 2020. So looking for a motion for item A.
Dennis, so moves.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments or questions around our item A? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Charles Scher? You're muted.
You're muted.
Sorry, yes.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes. So approved. Next would be item B, uh, policy maintenance, and there are three policies here, unless I, um, someone has an objection, I will take all three together. All right, it is the recommendation of the policy and curriculum committee that the Board of School Directors approve the first reading of the following policies. Policy number 222, tobacco and vaping products. Um, the second item is policy number 323, tobacco and vaping products, and the item three, policy 904, public attendance at school events. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Randy.
So moved, Randy.
Motion, Randy, is there a second? Second from Chuck, motion a second. Any comments or questions regarding item B?
Yeah, my only concern is in policy nine oh four, we explicitly allow service animals at sporting events and what other events, which certainly isn't a problem. I would just wonder if it wouldn't be a good idea to tighten up a definition of what makes it a service animal. It's gotta be more than a best service dog. I, I could just see all sorts of animals running around at the football games that have a best that say service dog.
I mean, we could look for language that we could add to the policy for a second reading that.
Yeah, I meant for second reading, yeah.
For the second reading for a definition, defining service, service animals.
Okay. I mean, they have to be restrict, I mean, don't they have to be leashed? I mean, even if they're a service animal.
Yes. Yep. I think it's a, it's a small, we can get a small statement defining service animals by the accepted standards for what a service animal is, so.
Well, there is some certification, I think, but I'm not sure of that.
It's something that's been abused quite a bit though, because this has happened at campus a little bit. But it is something that's been abused. So maybe we want to find a way around it.
For a second reading, see if you can get a definition. Okay.
Perfect. Any other comments or questions around item B?
I just wanted to mention again, I know I said it in my report, but just because the two, the policy one and then two, they're named the same things, it's just because one falls under the, the category of the grouping of policies that apply to employees and the other one is the grouping that applies to pupils, students.
Great, thanks for clarifying. Any other comments? Okay, hearing and roll call, Ricky.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes, so approved. Next is item C, the Business Administrator's Contract. The approval of the contract as business administrator effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2022 at a salary of 1,003, $103,250 per the attached contract. I'm assuming that's a recommendation of the school board and administration to have that approved, so looking for a motion, please.
Al Darian's move.
Al, Al's a, is a motion, is there a second?
Second, Randy.
Motion a second, any comments or questions regarding item C? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Sorry, I'm muted, yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes, so approved. Like to say, Dave, we look forward to your continued contributions to the district, so.
Thank you, everyone. It's a pleasure to serve.
Great. Next we'll move on to item B, the copier lease. It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of School Directors approved the lease agreement with Fraser Partnership Plan, Inc. for a 60-month term at a monthly cost of $1,751 per the attached. Do I have a motion?
Al moved.
I'll second that.
So the motion a second, any comments or questions regarding item D? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Michael Hess? Mike?
Yes, sorry, muting.
Is Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes. So approved. Next we'll move on to item E, the C I S, CSIU Software Agreement. Is a recommendation of the administration, the Board of School Directors approved the Financial and Human Resources Software Program from the Central Susquehanna Intermediate Unit, CSIU, at an approximate cost of for the 2020-21 school year per the attached. Do I have a motion?
Dennis, so moves.
Motion from Dennis, there a second?
Second.
A second from Cecilia, motion a second, any comments or questions regarding item E?
Um, this is Chuck, is, is that a new, is that new software we're getting or is that replacing something we have or is that an ongoing cost?
It's an ongoing thing. We've been using CSIU for probably 15 years.
Okay.
We just have to renew it every year.
Gotcha. Okay, thank, thank you.
Any other questions around item E? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson? Eric?
Ah, gotcha, okay, yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes, so approved. Next is item F, the Concrete Pad for the Barn. It is the recommendation of the Facilities Committee that the Board of School Directors approve the install, installation of the concrete monolith footer pad from Sanders Masonry at an estimated cost not to exceed $9,500 per the attached. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Randy.
Second, Chuck.
And their motion for any second from Chuck, any comments or questions regarding item F? Hearing none, roll call, please, Ricky.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes, so approved. Next is item G, Board and Baton Horse Barn. It is the recommendation of the Facilities Committee, Committee that the Board of School Directors approved the purchase of a horse barn at Coopstown Area High School from the G and B Shed at a cost of $24,600 per the attached to be paid by the Monsanto grant. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Dennis.
Motion by Dennis, there a second?
Eric, second.
Motion by Dennis, Eric, by second. Any comments or questions regarding item G?
Just, ah, yeah, I have a, a couple of questions. One, one is I understand that we've gotten approval from the borough. I know I was, I missed this meeting, so I just wanted to be sure and the public, I guess, to be aware too, that we had from the borough for this.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Okay. And then my second question was, I know we have the $25,000 grant, the other money, the 9,500, and then I, in some information we received, we also saw information about the cost for hooking in water and electric, not a great, a great amount. We're able to just pull that out of regular construction parts of our budget for this year?
Yes.
Okay.
My, my only question is, I'm assuming horse barn is a generic term, we're not going to be keeping horses there, are we?
No, that's just what the proposals, that's what they call the barn, so I wanted to list it as it is on the okay, proposal.
That's kind of a misnomer, this is just a piece or part of us restructuring our ag department. And the Monsanto grant has actually been out there for a while now, it's just we've had some stumbling blocks getting this put together, so.
I, I assume that was the case, I just wanted to make sure we all, horse barn was not, no one's gonna say, hey, we're gonna get horses in Coopstown now.
Understood.
Good. Any other questions around item G?
I think it's worth that. I was just gonna say real quick for the record, I think it's worth recognizing all of the effort that the, the staff at the high school has gone through to get these projects this far.
Agree. All right, ro, roll call, please, Ricky.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes, so approved. Next is item H, a donation. It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of School Directors approve a $4,700 donation from the Coopstown Girls Basketball Booster Club to Coopstown Area School District for the purchase of a Dr. Dish All-Star Smart Shooting Machine. So I have a motion.
Oh, Bill.
Al moves, there a second?
Oh, a second, Randy.
Second from Randy. Any comments or questions regarding item H? Hearing none, roll call, please, Ricky.
Charles?
Yes.
Randy Birch?
Yes.
Al Darian?
Yes.
Michael Hess?
Yes.
Cecilia Holt?
Yes.
Eric Johnson?
Yes.
Dennis Ritter?
Yes.
Carl Nolte?
Yes, so approved. Next is item I, interdiction, introduction of new business by board members. Is there anyone on the board that would like to bring some new business forward?
I just want to thank everybody, our staff, our cafeteria staff, our teachers, administration for all the work that's gone in to take care of our students in this current crisis.
And if I could add to that, from the perspective of a parent, the district's been doing a magnificent job. And I've been hearing it from other parents too, it's not just me listening, you know, my kids and their teacher calls. Everyone's really come together and I think we should all be very proud to be part of this district.
I agree. Any other comments from board members? Any other new business anyone would like to bring up? Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Anyone in the public that would like to comment?
Um, just prior to public comment, I would like to just throw in one thing, you know, Kim Cowell. I'd like to thank Kim for, you know, her time and dedication to the district as we accept the resignation, Kim. Phenomenal member of the elementary staff working as at our library aid and took great care to ensure that our students staff and even myself at times, Kim was kind of a go-to when I was reading to elementary students to look for a great new book. So I'd like to thank Kim and wish her the best of luck in her new endeavor. I also have, I do, the way this process is supposed to work, I do have one public comment that was submitted via email. So I'd like to read an email that was, that was submitted. And the email is from Shannon Hyder. Would like to be taken into consideration that many parents are teaching multiple children. These kids also have a lot disrupt in their lives already and this form of schooling is doable, but also adding stress. The kids also won't be behind if everyone stops at the same time. While back, I, a while back, I believe we got a phone call from the school stating that we would not be penalized for the time they missed. I don't feel as though it's fair to take, take that back now, just my opinion. Just wanted to, I feel strongly about it and this was in relation to sort of the word that was out about the calendar update. Yes, one family, you know, expressing that it is, there are challenges to the virtual learning at home. We understand that. I, I think kids are entitled to it, this education in those days, so that's why it's my recommendation. But that is one public comment that we had submitted via email.
I think we certainly all understand the, the difficult and challenging times it can be for families and with, with multiple children in the district and many other things that are going on at Sandpoint Topps, so certainly, certainly understand that. Is there any other? Anyone else? Having any comments or can we, how do I signal that we can, can move on?
I think someone just.
Did a chat.
Tracy, Tris, Tracy Webb. We appreciate the district's efforts to keep our students academically engaged under these unusual circumstances.
Great.
Thank you, Tracy.
Any other public comments? Anyone else want to make a comment? Okay, hearing none, then we will move on. Uh, you got, everyone has the informational items in their packet. Uh, the condensed three board summary report, the cafeteria fund report and the student activity report from the high school and the middle school. Uh, item 10 is upcoming public meetings. Information, informative for dates on April 27th. Uh, there will be a budget and finance meeting at 7:00 PM. And all of these meetings I am listed right now will currently be considered, will be virtual. Uh, so April 27th, budgets and finance meeting at 7:00 PM. May 4th is the workshop school board meeting at 7:30 PM. May 11th is Policy and Curriculum Committee meeting at 6:00 PM. May 11th is Facilities and Extracurricular Committee meetings at 7:00 PM. And May 18th is the regular school board meeting at 7:30 PM and all of these will be virtual. We will move to item 11, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
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 So be it, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for attending and stay healthy.
Yeah, goodnight, everyone, stay healthy.
Goodnight.
Goodnight.
Goodnight.